Hello, everyone, and welcome. This is the Issaquah City Council Infrastructure Committee meeting for March 21st, 2019. We have three items on the agenda this evening. And before we get started, regular committee member Stacy Goodman is away, and Vicky Hunt, thank you, is taking in her place. With me also is Lindsay Walsh. And of course, our staff lays on none other than Sheldon Lynn himself. Hey, the three agenda items tonight, we're going to start with one regarding a bill that I think we know a little bit about. It's called Agenda Bill 7714. Has to do with amending our code regarding wireless communication facilities. After that, we're going to have a, we're going to talk with Jeff Flatling, our Parks Director, about some facilities issue. And then we'll conclude this meeting with our standard, which we do monthly with some project updates given by Sheldon. But first, we're going to start with Mr. Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development and Development Services here at the city. Welcome, Keith. And this is a topic I know you know very well, so. And let me say as well, our intent is not to cover the entire topic. This has gotten quite a bit of vetting in multiple meetings. And a month ago, we kind of thought we were done. But then, boy, sometimes, other thing, what happened, there was some lingering conversation, and there was a realization that there was an item related to notifications around Level One reviews, and that's what we're going to talk about. But we also did talk last month about a number of other issues, including, I think, Keith, that maybe you're going to address some of the response to the open issues that we talked about last month, or just the level notification.
So, I plan to talk about the notification, and you, we received, Councilmember Hunt's not going to get it because I did not know she was sitting in for Councilmember Goodman. I do have a hard copy to pass out. We did receive written comments today from Verizon. I think they're here, and going to probably talk to them as well. But I will also address them as part of my presentation. So if any of you want a hard copy, and sorry for clogging up the mic, but I think I did make that in the whole room. So that's a copy, please take one if you want one. If not, I will recycle. So let me do this, Councilmember Winterstein, let me go through this. It's a fairly short presentation. And if you have some other questions or pieces of this you'd like to talk about, I'm more than happy to do that. As you mentioned, we pretty much, we came out of committee a month ago with a recommendation. And what came up was, a technical issue came up at the end of the council deliberations. And my apologies, I should have basically said, let's let the administration go back and put together some language, and that way, we could have brought it forward and been a little bit more, I think, in the same place on that outcome than we were. And so that was, that was my mistake, and I apologize for that. So, here we are, Agenda Bill 7714 again. This is the language about public notification that was in the current draft as amended. So if you remember, what's shown in black was our adopted code. And we have gone through and redlined it based on the FCC order. And we had proposed a little bit of a revision to this section, but this section was limited to Level Two permits for public notice. Okay? So, here we go. We've got a couple visuals. The one on the left would constitute a Level Two permit application. So, so this guy, this guy here, this is a new small cell pole. And you can see the light poles down here. And if, if one of the carriers wanted to install this pole in this location, this is not our city, what we required was 300 feet of notice to property owners. So, so these homeowners would have all got notice that this pole was going in, and there'd be an opportunity to have a conversation. I know where we got a little bit sideways last time was about this situation. Now, what we've got here is an existing light pole, and it's being retrofitted with an extension for antennas to be installed. And then there would be a cabinet that could be either pole-mounted or ground-mounted. And we talked about that as an impact, and whether that deserved notification, and I'll get to that in a second. I wanted to put up a graphic, this is hypothetical because this is Issaquah Highlands, so there's actually not a PSE pole that you could put an antenna on because it's all underground. And the light poles are custom, so this is not a real scenario. But what I wanted to give you a sense for is if there was a pole going in at the corner of the street intersection, these are the number of properties that would fall within the notification requirements for a new pole. So this, this represents 300 feet, and I just wanted to give you a sense, because when we get to talking about where we want to go with the Level One permits, there's a couple different choices that I think we're going to talk about. So, proposals. Option number one was the existing code prior to the last committee meeting, which said, Level Two, 300 feet notice, Level One, no required notice. After talking about it at committee last month, we added Level One to the 300-foot notice, and that is represented now by option two. Option three was basically a little bit of a different take, and I'll explain why. So for Level One, what this suggests is only noticing the adjacent property owners. And so part of that rationale is, if you've got a pole out there, and that pole is two doors away, and you've, you've got maybe an extension going on, or maybe some pole-mounted equipment, that impact is really affecting those adjoining properties, because the idea that the pole's already there, you know it's there, it's just really now about the box and the antenna, and, you know, it could very well be, if those are two-story homes, that if it's pole-mounted or ground-mounted, you're not going to see it if you're two doors away. So option three represents a little bit less onerous option for the providers. So to remind you guys, they are doing the notice, not the city, as the way the code is written. So that is a third choice. And we can talk about all three, and which ones might resonate with you guys. The letter we got, the letter I passed out, basically, and I don't, I don't want to put words in their mouth, and I know it's going to be addressed specifically by a representative from Verizon in a moment, but, you know, the position that they have is, or what I read into this, or took out of this, sorry, I'm choosing my words maybe too carefully, is that we're treating them differently than we do other utilities in the right-of-way. So, for example, if PSE added a transformer to an existing power pole, we don't require them to notice people within 300 feet. And I think what they're saying is, well, you know, it should be level across all fields. I talked about this with Daniel Kenny, and I think our position is that we believe that...
Who's Daniel?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Daniel Kenny's with Ogden Murphy Wallace, serves as city council, that's city attorney, not you guys. Sorry, it's been a long week, on our wireless code. And so we talked about this, and when he and I talked this through, I think we agree on the basic point that Verizon is making. I think we don't want to dismiss the fact that we are treating them differently. But I think we came to the conclusion that we believe the impact of the wireless facilities are different than the PSE poles for a couple reasons. One is the existing PSE poles, they're existing, right? You buy a house, you move in, the pole's there, you know it's there. New neighborhoods in town, no above-ground utilities, they're all underground. So basically, for you, for PSE poles, they're already there. And so, these are new. And new is change, and change requires a little bit different touch in terms of people's perceptions and how we should notice those changes. The second is, you know, you have a certain rhythm of, of power poles and streetlights. And we kind of can understand what that looks like, you know? And there's really only one provider, it's PSE. Here, we've got Verizon, and T-Mobile, and maybe Sprint, and AT&amp;T, and Comcast, and maybe others coming down the road. And if they're all putting in poles, and this is a question I've not been able to answer in any of the forums, we've had conversations about small cell wireless, is how many poles are there going to be? We don't know. And I think we won't know for quite some time. So, the number of poles, and if they all have above-ground, exposed facilities, that impact on our community feels a lot different than PSE poles. So for those reasons, I think the administration is inclined to leave consideration for Level One public notice, and, and not take it out based on the letter we got from Verizon. So with that, I'm going to stop talking, and see if you guys have questions before you take comment, assuming you are going to take comment.
Yeah, we do, and I'll get to you in a moment, please, real quick. Just my own clarification, what you just presented. Are you, are you recommending, what option are you, is the administration recommending?
So the administration believes option three is probably the right option. Option two is more conservative. I think, though, that the visual impact of facilities going on existing poles is, could probably be handled adequately by adjoining property owners as opposed to the 300 feet.
All right.
But if the, if the council wants, wants to cast a wider net, that's, that's your guys' decision. I don't think, I don't think that's the wrong choice.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Who wants to go first? I didn't see you. Go ahead. Lindsay?
So, in the Verizon letter, it also talks about batching multiple applications.
Yep.
So, when doing a notice, it wouldn't be about every single item in the application. A notice would be specific to a single pole or adjustment change there, right?
Right. We wouldn't draw a polygon around, say, you know, if 15 cell, cell sites were being batched together, we wouldn't draw some polygon around that and say, go 300 feet. It would be on a pole-by-pole basis.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Land use and zoning is usually based on the 300 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, I'm wondering, are there, are there changes that are noticed at the adjacent property level rather than the 300 feet? It seems like for most of our processes, it is that buffer of 300 feet from the change.
So, yes, 300 feet is a norm. And, you know, I, I think that we were going from zero to something, it could stay zero, for Level Ones, zero notice. And, and you could say that, okay, if, if there's an adjoining parcel, that's more than zero. If, you know, if, part of, part of the discussion is, what does that notice actually do? Okay? So, the code is going to allow the facility, right? And what you're doing is you're sending out notice, so that people know that changes are going to happen. But let's assume that we're talking about a pole that's adjacent to Mr. Kapler's property, and he has testified that he has a pole, or two, next to his property. So let's assume it's the pole next to his property, and let's assume Mr. Kapler, who looks at that pole beyond his backyard fence, says, "I don't want that cabinet pole-mounted because I'm going to look at it every day. I would love for it to be ground-mounted." Okay? Great. That's, that's public comment, we're getting that. Now, let's assume that the property owner on the other side, who looks at the backside of Mr. Kapler's fence, says, "Well, I don't want it on the ground because I'm going to, I have to mow around it and do all these kind of things. I would rather have it on the pole." So now I've got the community saying, "Put it on the ground, put it on the pole." And, and so, and when you expand that net to 300 feet, for someone who might be two doors away, or looking over their roofline at a pole, what are we going to do for them? And I'm just, I'm asking that so that the council considers, what are we trying to achieve with the notification in the, in the first place? And if what we really want is for a resident not to wake up the next day and have a crew out there installing antennas and a box without knowing it, you know, at what point, how close, how proximate to that facility do you want, need to be to feel like, you know, you weren't missed, right? And so I'm not pushing back on the 300 feet, Councilmember, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that visual blight is as impactful 300 feet away than it is maybe adjoining.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask my question again, though. I'm wondering if there are processes that are noticed only at the level of adjacent properties rather than the 300 feet? Because zoning, and to my knowledge, things are typically, changes on properties are typically noticed at this 300 feet. So I'm just wondering if there are examples of changes that are noticed only for adjacent properties?
Yes, there is, and I know you're going to ask for an example, and I don't have one.
Okay.
But, 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 and, and as part of the 18 overhaul, we're dissecting the 300 feet because it's, is that the right number? It might be 500 feet. I mean, I think, you know, it's been 300 feet, we do 300 feet, other jurisdictions do 300 feet, it's not in state statute. And so part of it, as we look at public notice, is trying to reassess some of those questions. That doesn't help you right here, but I just wanted you to know that that's a bigger question that we're working on.
And then, one other question about the adjacent property. If it's an adjacent property that is vacant, for example?
Right.
It's still, I mean, it's any adjacent property.
Right. Because you do it by assessor's records, right? You know, we're trying to not make it, you know, so onerous on the applicants that, that it becomes a big problem. You know, you draw a circle, you've got parcel numbers, you've got addresses, all from the King County Assessor's page, it's, that part seems pretty easy to us.
Keith, because you mentioned, I might clarify, you used the phrase a moment ago, the 18 overhaul. And for those that are wondering, it is part of the work plan of your department this year, and perhaps beyond this year, to take a look at Section 18 of the Issaquah Municipal Code, which is a big piece of code. And you were referring to that larger task, not any particular section when you said that.
Thank you. I am trying not to speak in shorthand tonight, but I'm apparently not doing a very good job.
The 18 overhaul, now I know what it means.
Yep.
Everybody else does, too.
Land use code redo.
Okay. And, and just to split hairs even further, define adjacent?
So adjacent, so I looked, I, I thought about the word adjacent versus adjoining quite a bit. Because we are talking about often, facilities in the right-of-way. What it is, so adjacent means it's basically adjacent to that location on all sides. It's the way I'm understanding that.
So, so there will be some parcel owner where that facility is going, and it will be those parcels immediately adjoining that parcel?
And because this one, this one seems hard, there's going to be a diagram. So, the notification, so part of, part of the code sends the applicants to a checklist that we have, and we've started putting that together, I think it's just about done. There will be a template for public notice, so that, you know, it says the things we want it to say. And there will also be likely a diagram that shows how we want 300 feet measured, and how we're considering adjacent to work.
Okay. Yes, Vicky, go ahead, please.
I have a follow-up. If, if there's a long right-of-way, which I think sometimes there's very long, so this could presumably have a further reach in some instances than the 300 feet buffer?
That's not the intent. So, so that's one of the reasons why I think we're going to put a diagram in, to show that it's really, so, the problem is, it's not always going to be the same. If, if the pole happens to be at a property corner, in right-of-way, basically at a property corner, then you could assume there'd be four, assuming there's properties all the way around it. But there could be one big parcel on the opposite side of the street, and that could be one, right? So it might only be three property owners. Or it could be likewise, if it was on Gilman, there might be one big parcel on one side and one big parcel on the other side, so that might be two. So, there's going to be a diagram to hopefully make it clear to the applicants on how we expect them to notice to meet these requirements. Because I don't think you can make it clear in text to apply to all conditions where there wouldn't be confusion. At least that was my, my takeaway.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Keith. You can't escape. Don't go anywhere. Just come over here. Okay, don't go far.
I won't go far.
All right, thank you. I would like to take this opportunity, if any members of the public would like to address the committee. And we will, on conclusion of, of public comments, talk amongst ourselves and, and attempt to reach some recommendation back to our full council. So, if, if, if you'd like to make public comment, please identify who you are, who you represent, and I will, we get pretty rigorous on, on keeping track of time. Generally, in these committee meetings, we try to keep the comments, we often say three, you could go to five minutes. I will be tracking time. I'd like to get a sense of hand of how many people from the public here may want to make comments this evening. I'm seeing two, three hands, so, great. I'm sorry, did I miss a hand? All right. Okay, so, who would like to go first, sir? Go ahead, please. Please come up to the mic, identify yourself and your association, and please keep it to the topic at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Devendra Maharaj with Verizon Wireless. My office located in Bellevue, Washington. Good evening, Councilmembers, city staff, and the public. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Mr. Nevin did a great job of going over the issues we laid out in our comment letter, thank you very much. I would just like to go through them as well. The, the issues Verizon's previously noted were largely addressed, so we also thank you for that. Our concerns with this recent requirement for notification within the 300 feet, we have it split up into four basic concerns. The first one, this notice would be more burdensome, a more burdensome requirement than is required of similar infrastructure. PSE is another user of the right-of-way, and they are not subjected to this public notice. Number two, this public notice would create a false expectation that the public will have input that would affect change. You are giving them notice, however, it does not have any bearing on the actual process. Number three, with the batching of these applications, the notifications became, become logistically difficult to get those notifications out when we're dealing with multiple facilities. And my last, so when the city of Issaquah is, from what I understand, short-staffed, the city will be placed in a difficult position, drawing outsized public attention to the proposed activity on multiple poles, which, in our opinion, far exceeds the small visual impact for attaching to an existing or replacement pole. With that, again, we appreciate the opportunity to comment here tonight and have input towards working towards a workable code for the residents, visitors, and businesses of Issaquah, while working to preserve the look and the feel of your community. So we do, thank you for that. I am available for questions, should you have any. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Sir, go ahead, please. My name is Greg Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group, and we are consulting firm, there are Issaquah offices located in the professional center, just north of here. And I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. So, I'm here to talk about notice. AT&amp;T thinks that notice is a good thing. The problem is, the way notice is implemented in this code, we think that it may present a problem where the code does not line up with the FCC order on its face. So the problem lies in when notice, the Level One and Level Two review, the way it interacts with the Issaquah Administrative Procedure Act, when someone comments on a proposed small wireless facility, they become a party of record. And in a party of record in the Issaquah code, that requires, when there's a decision made on the permit, then the city has to send notice to this party of record. And then, that's a 14-day period of waiting, waiting for an appeal, and then, if the appeal goes through, that's a 90-day appeal process. And that makes it very difficult to meet the shot clock, 60 to 90-day shot clock. So the city's placing itself in a very difficult position by placing the notice as a Level One and Level Two segment with that. AT&amp;T recommends changing it so that instead of with this solution, it would be a construction permit, which places the onus on the carrier to provide notice, which we've done in other jurisdictions. The citizens still get notice, and the timing of the notice is after the application is granted, and it's before construction. So citizens still have time, they understand that this is going to happen before the work crews come out, there's no worry about, no worries about being left out, and there's still time to comment. They can still comment on the location, the size, and design. But this is after the city's had a chance to review, and doesn't have to worry about running afoul of the shot clock. And I have any, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. Would anybody else like to speak to the committee? David? Welcome.
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Thank you for bringing this back and working on it some more. New poles, to me, I mean, are basically a fat, flat, fat flag pole. I'm not sure that they're that much of an issue. I think they're fairly skinny, they're, they don't have some of the same things that they do when they put up an existing pole, it appears from pictures we've seen, in terms of the antennas and that kind of thing. I'm not sure there is a big deal. There was concern, and I think some people especially concerned about, don't, don't want vaults in their front, their yard, especially with the narrow 35-foot lots and stuff we see, and parts of the Highland, and Talis, and that kind of thing. By the time they take their driveway and everything, there isn't much left. A pole might be perceived as being less invasive to their yard than in some kind of above-ground facility. Seems like size of these facilities is going in the wrong direction. The latest federal law makes them bigger, and we think of technology in the small laptops or whatever, or smaller-than-laptops that you all have in front of you as the direction. Some things are going, but these seem to be going in the wrong direction. They have the potential of proving a whole bunch of these things on this and making a long-term mistake, because once some of these facilities are built, or attached to poles, or whatever, or on the ground, or whatever, it's going to be potentially long-term, we have to be very careful. There was kind of a suggestion that the notification doesn't mean anything, that it can't change, or it won't change anything, and won't have an effect. And I think a notification should be seen as a way to potentially have some negotiation going on with adjoining property owners. And a question is, what is adjacent? Pole, in my picture that I had sent you before, is in the right-of-way, the alley right-of-way, but it's two or three feet towards my, on the neighbor, in front of her property, not my property. So I'm not truly adjacent by adjacency. It's adjacent to her property, I suppose, but it's on public property. So I think there's a problem there. 300 feet for a new pole in the Highlands or Talis doesn't make sense notifying that many people. I think, and for hanging a bunch of stuff on these existing poles, I think we don't need to do a 300-foot. But we, there is a visual impact certainly within 100 feet of that, potentially. And I think notification makes much more sense to be closer to 100 feet. I still get notices on duplex things or different things. I still get notices on duplex things or different things happening a long ways away from my house, because I'm within 300 feet of some of the things on East Sunset, and I really don't need repeated notifications on that. And that's a much, you know, that's, could significantly impact parking in the neighborhood and other kinds of things that could be happening. But we're looking mostly at a visual kind of thing here. Let's get us a much shorter distance, but, but, but to have a distance where the people that could be visually impacted can at least have a chance to make their case. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
We would like to speak to the committee. Do you see on the agenda?
We'll have a separate opportunity. We will, typically what we're doing in these is, at the conclusion of each agenda item or, or the end of each agenda item, we give public comment opportunity on that item. All right. Anybody else for this item? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your comments, everyone. Keith, you're back up. First, let me ask if any of my committee members have any questions for Keith in follow-up. Go ahead, Vicki.
There was a reference made to the public record policy that individuals would have to be put on the, on the record, and that that would cause a burden. I wondered if you could speak to or address that, how that process would work.
Sure. So, so-
Parties of records, sorry.
Yeah, I'm with you. So, every administrative decision is appealable. And to Mr. Bush's point, you know, if you've noticed people, then they know that they have an opportunity to appeal that decision. So are you creating more risk that there is another process that, that entails from that notification, possibly, because it's more transparent that that's what's happened? But not because you've made the decision. The decision's appealable regardless. You could make the argument, how would you ever know if there was no notice given? You'd have to magic. So, you know, I think the thing about it is, my understanding of the shot clock is we have a certain amount of time to issue the permit. If the permit is, is appealed, I would have to check with Ogden Murphy Wallace. I would believe that that comes outside of the shot clock. We just, my obligation is to issue a permit within a certain amount of time. If that ultimately gets appealed, and there's another process that follows, I can't control that. That's part of, that's part of our process. So, I guess, I don't, I don't know that I agree with the, the comment that this puts more burden on us to be able to accommodate both the permit issuance and a potential appeal period within the shot clock timeline. That has not come up before now, so I would need to double-check with Ogden Murphy Wallace. That was not my read, or my understanding of how the shot clocks work, but I can check.
Anything else, Vicki? Lindsay, any comments or questions, or questions for Keith?
I do have a question for you, Keith. So, so there is a premise been stated that, I'll put it bluntly, you know, that public comment is, is a waste of their time, because it can't change anything. That's, that's, it's even in this letter. Does it right here. It gives the, it gives the, creates a false expectation that public input will affect changes to the project. Is that true?
No, I don't think so. I, I think that, to the point that, the code is the code, and the code says, gives them predictability on how they can permit their facilities. But part of the code leaves some things at the director's discretion, in terms of especially above-ground facilities, and we talk about design characteristics and screening, and a lot of things which are open to some level of interpretation. I want to be clear that we're not creating a morass that they cannot get through, because legally, we can't do that. But if someone came in and said, you know, "I'm not super excited about that pole-mounted cabinet, but you know what, if you could paint it gray, that would, that would make me feel a lot better." You know, what I'd do is, is I'd say, "Devendra, can we paint that gray?" And if he says, "Absolutely." You know what, that neighbor feels like they got something. Would it have been gray without that conversation? Maybe, maybe not. But that's how it can change. It can change in very little ways, but sometimes that's all a neighbor needs to feel like they got a win. I, I think Mr. Kapler has some ideas on how he could get a win out of this, and I don't know that they're big changes, but he wants an opportunity to be able to have that conversation if ultimately one of his poles gets slated for an addition of wireless facility. So, I believe that there is an opportunity to improve the outcome by engaging the community.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had to do was the comment about if it's actually placed in the right of way and not in somebody's private parcel.
And, and the question about how you then-
What's adjacent?
So adjacent, so that's, so that's where I think a diagram is going to come into play, and-
But if the adjacency is, it consists of a public right of way dividing the two parcels?
Then it's going to be the parcels on both sides.
Okay.
And if there is, if it's out of property corner, I would say you'd have all four corners.
All right. Okay. Thank you for those, Keith. Anything else before? Okay. All right, now we get to deliberate and make a decision and make a recommendation. Either of you like to speak first?
So, I'm glad this got brought back. I think there was some unintended consequences of talking about certain level one situations where it was on the ground versus above the ground. I'm comfortable with the administration's recommendation for number three. I think we probably do need to have a larger conversation about whether that 300-foot, you know, area for notice is the right one. I'm not sure if now is necessarily the time that that needs to be done, considering we need to get this passed so that we don't run afoul of the FCC ruling. So, I would be comfortable with number three.
Thank you. Vicki?
My preference is for option two, that's the option for the 300-foot for both level one and level two. I have a couple reasons for that, for why that's my preference versus, versus option three. Firstly, I think we, there's a lot of uncertainty about how many poles, what these are going to look like, how big the technology is actually going to be, how many different companies are going to be putting different boxes. There's a lot of uncertainty around it, and I overall am in favor of erring on the side of having the code have more noticing, sort of cover more possible situations where somebody might want to know that, that some change is being made that affects them or affects their property or their view. So, I, I'm overall in favor of making sure that we notice, notice people, and if it's, if it's more people than would care to know that there's going to be a pole 300 feet away, I think that's a better outcome than somebody feeling like they, they would have liked to have an opportunity to know ahead of time. I think it makes it more transparent, so I would like to err on the side of more transparency. And then, I also, I make issue with this idea that the notice, public notice creates a false expectation that public input will affect changes, because also, as, as elected officials, if we're hearing from the community, if they're, if they are responding to notices about something, then we also have potentially policy or other things that we can consider about changes that we can make. So, I think it can, anyway, I think public, public input can always affect the process. So, just like to make that clear, and, and people should always feel that that input is valued and that we take it into consideration. And then also, I thought the comment about the aspects that are discretionary of the director, and then also the ability to work with the various providers was, was potentially impactful and potentially makes a big difference. So I think that's, I think that's important. And, the other, the other reason why I'm in favor of the 300 feet is that it just sounds pretty complicated to have these right of way where you need a diagram to figure out which is adjacent. And I also think that up in the Highlands, you would have adjacent properties that might be really small. We have, we, we just have different areas of town where this will mean very different things. In some places, you might have an adjacent property that's vacant, and it's going to affect the next property's view, potentially, because, or, you know, you might have a hillside, and there's all kinds of things. And I think in our code overall, all of the examples that I can think of for noticing and changes is that 300 feet. If the code, if the overall overhaul is going to be looking at that, then I think that would be a good opportunity to look at, is that 300 feet make sense for this and for every other place where we have this 300 feet. So, I think it standardizes it. I think it's simpler, and I think it's more inclusive of folks to make sure that everybody gets a notice.
All right, thank you, Vicki. I felt all along that I thought 300 feet didn't make sense. It, it, I actually think it's a little bit too much, given what we're talking about these are, and I didn't know what the right answer would be. I think I, I may have even suggested to you at some time, I, I may remember this wrong, I thought maybe something like 100 feet. So, this is the first time I'm considering some, the proposal that it would be adjacent. And I, I do respect all of Vicki's comments and arguments, and then this idea of being responsive to our citizens is, you know, that, that's always important. I always take those considerations very seriously. I think in the, in this case, however, I think what, with the actual type of facilities that we're talking about, I'm actually comfortable with the administration's proposal of adjacent. I don't think that's too difficult to define. At the same time, I will say that, you know, the, the idea that, you know, that 300 feet is, is a special burden, I don't quite get that, because everything's automated. It wouldn't be a lot of, a lot of person hours to do all that. I'm not too, that, that argument, it isn't what persuaded me at all. I just think is what it, what type of structures we're talking about affecting and notifying the immediate parcel owners in that vicinity, I think is a balanced way and fair way to go. I do believe that there is effect, that the, that comments, comments have an effect. And, and, and it may not be, may not stop a project. I don't think that's the intent. I think we've talked about some circumstances that are realistic. And so I think that's what, that's what we're, we have in mind when we say we, we're in favor of that. And, you know, I gotta say, you know, comments about us being short-staffed, I gotta tell you, you sit here in this chair, and what the FCC has done feels like a burden. It is, it is forcing somebody else's will upon our local jurisdiction. And so whenever anybody comes in and, and says to me, you know, it's kind of like, "Gosh, you don't have enough." Well, yes, because somebody else is raining down upon us, right? And so we're having to adjust to this. And, 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 you know, FCC has got their way, and we'll see if it stands up. We'll see, we'll see where that goes. We're accommodating, we're being fair, but at the same time, we have an obligation to our citizens. And, and we have to deal with this the best that we can. And yeah, there may be multiple carriers coming in. If they don't share a pole, yeah, it's going to be pretty burdensome, and, and it's going to be, not the fact that we may be short-staffed is not going to be the problem. So, so yeah, thanks for, for pointing that out, but there's a, there's a bigger issue here, and I'm very uncomfortable to, to have to listen to, you know, you know, you're, you're going to have a problem if, if you do this. We know what we're doing. We're doing it at the right, I think, for the benefit of our citizens, and, but there's also a bigger issue that this, this represents. So, we are making accommodations for the FCC rule. This is the only thing that's outstanding. I'm in agreement with, with Lindsay about the proposal number two, and, but I'll give either of you another opportunity to respond before I, I call for our recommendation to the full council. Yes?
On the, so on the recommendation three, would there be instances where if, if it were more burdensome to do the 300-foot, would there be, would there be a motivation to use, to do a version of the project that would require level one instead? Would there be cases like that?
I don't think so, because the cost of, so the cost of the new pole that is a two is well beyond the cost of retrofitting a pole which is number one. So whatever the cost is to do the public notice, won't come close to the cost of installing a new pole, if that was your question.
Well, I think, I think it addresses my question. My question is that there's a statement about it being 300 feet from the outer edges of the polygon is logistically difficult to calculate, and, and would that motivate to somehow-
And, and we weren't-
Switch to the level one process?
And, and just to be clear about that, so, so if what they're asking is, let's assume that they were going to put a pole here, and they were going to put a pole here, you know, the question was, would you create a polygon that would encompass both of those, where maybe you're including notice to some people that are technically outside the 300 feet of either pole? And what we answered was, we wouldn't do the polygon. Each pole would have its own notification criteria that they would have to demonstrate that they complied with, not as an overall permit application. Does that make sense?
I think so. I think the, I think the question was answered. And if, if you had a, if you had a project that involves a lot of poles or a lot of technology that were on different poles within this 300-foot radius, would you then get three notices in the mail for every?
If it was, if it was all within one application, so if Verizon, Verizon was dropping a pole here, and was dropping a pole at this corner, I don't think they'd ever be that close, but if they did, this parcel would get one notice, because it's all part of one application. They wouldn't get a notice, but the app, but that's part of one of the reasons why we're going to provide a template for the public notice. So it's going to show a map, right? So it's going to show a map, and it would show a dot, it would show a dot here and a dot here, so that if I lived here, I'd be like, "Oh my gosh, I'm getting two poles in my neighborhood." And so, rather than getting two separate notices from Verizon in the mail, right? So.
Okay, anything else, Vicki? I think just for clarification, and leave that diagram up there first. First of all, if my comments were unclear, it was option number three from the administration that I was in favor of. Lindsay, can I ask, ask clarification where, where you, what your support was for?
Yes, I, I support option number three.
As well? Okay. All right. Okay, and Keith, just real quick, I pretend, I promise not to belabor this any further. With the option that we're considering with that dot where it is, it seems to me that parcel 1705, 1506, 1505, and 1495 would receive notification.
If it was a level one.
With a level one, that's what I'm talking about. That's right. Because level two is still 300 feet.
Right. So, so all of these parcels down here would not.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so, we're not unanimous? I would like to, it's, it's, it's two in favor of the administration's recommendation and one in favor of an alternative recommendation. Now, I want this to come back to full council. And this matter is complex, I think, and I know that, now the question you're waiting for, what's the shoe going to say about consent or on regular business? I'd like to get the, I, I have an opinion, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues on the council, whether consent or regular business.
I'm comfortable with consent, and I will just say, I am in favor of option number three. If I would be comfortable with option number two, I don't see a huge difference there, so, you know, depending on which direction we go, but I would still say consent.
Okay, and you would be recorded as favoring option number three, as proposed, the administration's recommendation. Okay. Okay. Is it yes, Vicki?
So, so firstly, on the consent versus regular business, I think that it can be on consent. That would be my feeling, because I think everybody is, I think, on council, we have had a number of touches with this item, and so I, I would say I think it can be on consent. And I, and I think we've had a good conversation this evening on this last part. And I'm still in favor of number two, but I also respect the, the opinions in favor of the administration's recommendations.
Okay, Keith, so this is going to come back to the reg, to full council on consent with note of, of our preferences as given here.
Will do. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for that. We- And thank you, everybody, for that. We only ran 36 minutes over, but that was just poor planning on our part, right, Keith?
You know, I'm, I'm going to blame the public for all their comments. Just kidding.
Thanks for coming. That's, that's always great. Okay. Second agenda item. Are you going to go up there or are you going to do here?
Here, is that okay?
Okay. Well, that means you have no visual for us. We're just going to talk?
Nope, just conversation.
Okay. In fact, hi, good evening, Jeff Watling, Parkinson Recreation Director. I'm going to ask Tom Beckwith and Rex Bond to, to join me as a consultant team. Not as a means of anticipating a long exhaustive staff report, but really just setting the tone for wanting to hear from you tonight. You may recognize Rex Bond from ARC Architects, Tom Beckwith from Beckwith Consulting. They were the team that helped us last year. If you remember last September, we had a council work session where we presented and talked about the needs assessment and some of the work that we did. Really looking last year at our city hall facilities. I say facilities in plural. Really focused on three buildings, the building we're in, we know is City Hall South, City Hall Police Station across the street on Sunset and City Hall Northwest. Those three buildings really represent the three public facilities that house our municipal services, our city hall services. Tonight, really wanted to, I guess, have a chance to do a little bit of a refresh. And if anything, really position ourselves and better understand some of what you might be looking for as we are launching into a work plan item this year. As we had that conversation in September, we really left that meeting with some pretty significant policy questions to begin to, to look at and uncover. And so our, our desire with this work this year in 2019 is to delve into some of those policy questions. And really, I think to state what that policy question is now, before we jump into this, it was, I think at the conclusion of that needs assessment, we really saw and recognized that our three buildings are really at a point. We're, we're really on the cusp of significant capital investment that we need to make into those buildings. We have a, a need for, and really a desire and an interest to have a policy conversation about what our long range target is, to help inform what these near term investments would be. And what I'm, what I'm saying there is, do we consider, do we see ourselves really occupying and, and being in those three buildings for the next 15, 20 years? And then does that inform our near term capital investment strategy? Or do we see ourselves exploring other options for how we might house our city hall services, i.e. consolidating the one? And not that that would be happening immediately, but it would certainly, that long view allows us to really best invest our near term capital needs into these three buildings a little bit better, a whole lot better. So I think with that stated, we're here to certainly talk about the needs assessment, if you have questions about that, as we, as we refresh what that was. A little bit from me in terms of what, how we see this work and this conversation unfolding is certainly not in one work session. We have mapped out a, some tours, a chance for you as council to see, feel and touch these three buildings. I know Joanne had a chance to reach out to you. Thank you for getting the, the poll to us in April. We will be having those tours and a chance in small groups for you as council and, and with Tom and myself and Emily. Go take a look and see those buildings in May. We anticipate sort of a first of a series of two work sessions where we really begin to unpack what our options really are. I think dive a little deeper into what those capital investment needs are in these three buildings. Begin to look at and explore and really ask some questions of what are options? If we were to consider one consolidated city hall? And I think that the feedback and the conversation we have at that work session would likely inform a second work session that we would have later in the year. Really trying to get a sense of some direction and a sense of where we want to go as we will late summer into fall be heading into the budget season and, and help us to, to understand what budget planning we should be doing. So with that, I will stop talking and really open this up to conversation. Because like I said, tonight's intent is not to present new material to you. It's really to hear from you and to help best inform us and how we can be prepared as staff and consultant team for this series of conversations this year. Thanks, Jeff. And before I ask any questions, anything, I would actually want to ask Lindsay and Vicki. I don't, Vicki, you were, you received the briefing and you were around, right? Lindsay, how familiar are you with this?
I went back and watched the September.
Oh, everybody, that was awesome. Thanks, Lindsay. Thank you. That was great. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Okay. No, this is pretty unstructured. And, and I, I have a number of thoughts. They're kind of all over the place. And, and let me, let me, let me simply start with, before your presentation last time, I, I had a certain understanding of what this whole facilities question might be. We had originally talked about funding what we call the space study. And I'm thinking about, okay, they need to, need to move a wall over there or something like that. It came back quite different and I, I found it actually very informative. And I thought the whole presentation, the context that was provided, and it actually did take my thinking, I think, to a different level, which I think was your intent. And then since then, actually, since that presentation, I've reflected on that actually quite a bit. And I think there is many different ways that our facilities do affect not only our operations, but the quality of our services, but also it has quite a bit of, it, there are some soft elements to this as well, which have big impacts as well. And the truth is, you know, we live and operate in a very competitive jurisdictional environment, so to speak. And, and an element that I never really thought of, it may not pertain to people here today, but you know, going forward for this city to actually be the best that it can be, we have to be able to attract and retain good employees as well. And that's an actual issue. That's a real issue.
Was that a dig?
No, no, no. I'm saying, no, I'm saying you guys already made the call. You're, you've already made the call, like that you're here, which is great. I'm just saying is that I, I know that, you know, that's a factor I never had considered. And I think that's, that's a fair one. And we are, as council members, I think we have a responsibility to be thinking about the overall effectiveness of this government. And this is not the kind of topic that you really come here, think, that you're going to think about. You think about policy that affects people's lives in more, you know, direct and really literally concrete ways, whether it be traffic or infrastructure or safety. But the truth is, our ability to carry out our services and to assure that we have good term, you know, efficient and productive, good employees is a key part of that as well. So that was one way that you opened up my mind I hadn't thought of before. And this idea that, you know, that it might be really essential for the city to make an, a capital investment for some type of centralized location, that, that opened my mind in that way. And, and so that's really my, my feedback to you right now. I am very interested in pursuing it further, that a vision takes a little bit more shape so that we can continue a public conversation about how to get there. Because there will be trade offs. It's not like we, you know, despite some appearances, you know, you know, we don't, we don't just have capital sitting around all over the place. But we, and we have a lot of demands and some of them are really important. And, and some important ones are more important than other important ones. And that's kind of the, the hair splitting that we're in. So there is no easy question of this. And I, I will speak for myself that there are certain things that we've been committed to and are taking action on right now, especially our transportation related, that just out prioritize everything. And to me, this is now in that next tier of things. I'm not sure exactly where, but it's in that next tier of prioritization. But we have a huge capital plan and this is only part of it. But the idea of building a more thorough and complete vision and plan for centralized location is something I'm very interested in seeing. Not prejudging the result, but I, I would ask for that because I think it's, it's clear to me that it would have a real benefit to the city and to the citizens. But, and so we should, we should develop the idea further. Those are my comments. Sure. Go ahead, Lindsay.
So I went back and watched the video. I would highlight that I think the, some of the main questions there were the idea around, okay, we developed all this cost estimates, but we didn't talk about the land cost. And so that would be a big one for me is trying to understand what the land costs are if we were to build versus expand and what our options are as far as location. And I think there's several consequences of location. You talked a little bit about, you know, what's the impact on traffic in the old town downtown area? Right now, we know a lot of the traffic can come from people visiting the city hall. Does that then make sense to move it in a different direction because of traffic? Or is there a benefit to having it near transit? Is there a benefit, you know, in order to lower parking? Is there a benefit to having it in an iconic spot like Front Street Sunset that really talks about the character of our community? So those would be some of the questions I would have about location. Another thing that was brought up that I would just say, let's make sure we're talking about early on is what's the public engagement timeline? So that we know that we're not trying to have this conversation and then go out to the public to really know that this is a big decision and they need to be involved in it. Some of the options in cost talked about potentially selling City Hall South and Northwest and that there would be a profit from that. Some of my questions there would be, is there an option to potentially lease out those properties rather than selling them? I know they're old and that might not be an option, but I just want to make sure we're considering it. And then also, if we sell it, would we be selling the building and the land? And thus, you know, losing out on future options there? Another question, if we did end up kind of building on one of the existing properties, if we decide that that's the best option, what are the options for where the staff would work during construction? If we're having to knock down a building? And on that idea, not that I'm necessarily in favor of it, but I want to make sure we're looking at all the options. Is there an office building that we could look at leasing or occupying rather than necessarily building? Just to include options for costs.
As a long-term consideration even, is what I'm hearing you saying?
Yes, or even no, you know, because one of the options here that was talking about kind of renovating the buildings. I, I think there are certain ones that could do with more renovation and there's others that it would take a lot to get up to code requirements. And so maybe in that situation, doing kind of a dual interest idea there. And then I think the other thing that came out of watching that earlier conversation is there's a lot of questions about the assumptions contained in these numbers. There were assumptions made about the population growth, the staffing requirements needed for that population growth, the amount of space required for each of the staff members. So I think if we're going to have a full and open conversation about this, we're probably going to want to dig into some of those assumptions to make sure that we're going on the right direction. And one of the things for me that comes up with this, as I've lived in Essequo for the last 10 years and seen these schools build out all of these lovely, beautiful new schools that always go in with portables on day one. And I want to make sure that we are not shooting ourselves in the foot by building to maybe our current need or a small projected need and not the true need of ourselves going forward. So that's one of my considerations there.
Reconfirming those, those assumptions. Thank you so much, Lindsay. Jeff, or either, either of you, is there any, any quirk, questions? Clarifying questions or comments?
A couple, and I think a couple of responses real quick and turn it over to you guys. Yeah, public engagement. I'm sorry I didn't mention that. Obviously, as we map this out, yes, that will be part of it. And I think how and what that looks like, as Emily and Moon and I have discussed with the consultant team, it really feels like two aspects of this. I think there's a public education element, sort of defining what's going on and how we occupy and what, what condition those facilities, those buildings are in. But then also obviously in engagement, interaction piece and getting some response and feedback from, from residents in terms of what they might want us to consider to do. So, but engagement certainly being a big one. And then I, I think to your points, Councilmember Wash, about criteria as we consider what a consolidated city hall would look like. Yeah, I think we anticipate a, a much more involved conversation about criteria. What criteria do we want to consider as we look at that option? Certainly one of them being, do we consider city owned? Do we look at that sort of as a, what is, what does that modeling look like financially? If we're looking at existing city owned spate land versus new? That's a pretty considerable difference. I don't think we have to spend too much time doing property appraisals to, to realize the, the cost of land there. So, but those criteria as well as location, geographic location within the city, what are the pros and cons, et cetera. So much more to come there.
Did you want answers to these questions tonight? Those are good questions. I think one of the issues, if you're looking at other sites, is you got to know what's available in the market. And one of the things we've used in other projects is to put out an RFQ somewhere during your process and say, you have property you would make available, you have a building you make available. So you're really looking at all choices. You're not just out trying to identify just with your microscope.
I think your insights that I've heard are really spot on to what we felt as we were going through the discovery process of working with staff to find out, you know, what, what are your needs, what are your projected needs? And then with the consulting team of engineers going through these buildings and documenting the deficiency. And really, as you pointed out, in some way determining that you have enough land here to remedy all of the ADA issues that you've got right here. So there's, there's, there's a whole multitude of those types of insights that I think are really nice to do with the new guy. The cost of a new building is, is based on square footage. A dollar per square foot, looking at some type of the future. Then the, as you had pointed out, then the balance is, am I buying new land for that? Am I using existing land for that? Am I buying new land or am I selling my existing land? So there's sort of this, there's a whole sway in that spectrum that I think is an important thing to look at as well.
I think the other thing in this phase is to look at some alternative design, delivery and financing methods on either option, whether you stay where you are or whether you're going to build and consolidate a facility. While we didn't identify those in this phase, really we're looking at just requirements. You would want to look at design build, you'd want to look at lease purchase, you'd want to look at maybe using a limited levy lift rather than a bond. I mean, there's a variety of different tools that, that will affect not only your potential cost, but the practicality of trying to implement some of these. We think that's part of the question you want to look at in this phase.
Indeed. Hi, Vicki.
I have a couple of questions and they are, they're nearly the same questions that I had back in September. So I'm, I'm sort of stuck on these. One of them is about this, this assumption about a proportional to, a growth that's proportional to population and infrastructure and that the number of staff people for the department and that the space requirements. Basically, you have all these assumptions about the growth of the population requiring this proportional, having this proportional need for staffing and that that state, that that space will also need to grow. for staffing and that that space will also need to grow in a proportional way. And just because there's so many parts of that equation that seem to depend on these assumptions, I would like to better understand those assumptions so that we can make sure that we are addressing to the best of our ability our city's current and future needs since buildings have a long, long life if they're, you know, if they meet the needs of the community. And then I also had some questions about the parking. This would depend on where we are, but it's important potentially because land is very valuable and there's also projected requirements for parking and, as Lindsay pointed out, wondering about if we could use flex space for parking with other businesses or if we could use the transit center, if we could take into account those sorts of relationships and deal with parking. So I do have some specific sort of questions based on the past material. We didn't get any new material today. And overall, I'm having a little bit of trouble knowing, you know, what to comment or question on at this point because I don't, because we don't have additional information since last time. And I feel like those are my questions last time and this time. And it's still a very vague, it's still a very vague policy conversation for me.
Very fair and thank you. And again, our desire was to have, again, a confirmation of our approach, but also a conversation about how to best roll into this. So thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
And I have one more, which would be just to reiterate the importance of the community engagement, because I have heard from a number of different angles from the staff about the value that would be to have one collaborating in one facility. So I think we have heard from the staff and I think hearing from the community will be really important because part of the assumptions that go into why we would need to do this is because it's a way to serve the community better. So to fully understand that, I think we really need to have a robust community input process.
Thank you. Thank you Vicky. Jeff, you say it in your letter, that's part of the packet, that this, the primary policy question, which I'll read, says, "Given the current conditions identified in the 2018 budget, how do we want to proceed with city hall facilities to best serve in Issaquah into the future?" And you go on to say that we're going to answer that question over the next 12 months. So I viewed your visit here tonight as really now initiating that shot clock. Well, okay, it's not really shot clock. But you see this is unfolding and obviously there's going to be quite a few steps. And so I appreciate you raising hands. I'd like to have this opportunity to kind of formally kind of get this process started. It's nothing more than, hey, you three, you know something about it. If we should stop right now, you'd probably tell us. But otherwise, we'd like to proceed further and, you know, toward this objective. So I appreciate that. That's very, very nice. So is there anything more? I mean, I'm trying to resist going into too much detail because there's a lot of options, there's a lot of factors, there's a lot of considerations. And for what this is worth, if I've ever hired somebody to design and build something to me, the best outcomes I've always been, so here's my idea, now I'll get out of your way, right? And let the experts kind of put things together, you know, within certain constraints. And I think the study that we got was very, really thorough. It's clear that you've done this work before. We know, and it's been emphasized tonight about certain key factors that you know, and really all of those factors are important, but there are certain things about who we are as a city because the city hall does reflect that as well. And transportation and proximity or where it is, those are all very big issues. We understand that. We know we don't have unlimited funds. I know you know that. Know that, you know that, we know that. So I, you know, I like, I think it would be very good to see, if you don't already have, you gave us verbally kind of some idea of what a roadmap would look like. I suspect that'll be one of the first things that you put together. I'm assuming you're going to be using existing staff and existing resources. There's no, really no budget additional request in this for what you need the remainder of this year.
Correct. And again, thank you. The feedback we've got is ample. I know it'd be very easy to continue this conversation and we'll have many conversations. And starting with those tours, and again, those are meant to be very, very conversational. I think this will be conversational throughout. Roadmap, absolutely. We'll put together a project dashboard for this so that as we're going on the tours, as we're having work sessions, as we're continuing these conversations, we'll be able to track where we're at. We'll be able to share with the community and the public where we're at in this 12-month shot clock. As a former basketball player, I'm all for shot clock references. So it's great.
Okay, thank you. Now, so this concludes, I think, our Q and A. Now, it has been our practice, you know, to actually invite and allow for public comment on issues. There's really not a bill in front of us this evening. There's no specific policy question that we're addressing this evening. But I appreciate being let known earlier this evening that you had an interest in this topic. So we'd like to open it up to public comment. If anybody here would like to share their opinions, got a couple, three minutes up at the microphone, now would be a great time. Is anybody here would like to? Okay, not seeing any. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, we're going on to our last agenda item for the evening. This has to do with the regular old status report. And, but I don't want to make too much light of it. These are very important projects. I'm glad the fact that we did compile these. And we don't go through every one of them. There are certain, you may have some questions, but I'll turn it over to Sheldon. And I don't know if there's something up here you want to, well, we're working from electronic copy. And I don't know if that's something you can control up there.
I can get up there and put it up if you want, or I can just speak to it because it's going to be really general. I don't have any project-specific items I want to talk about. I want to talk about generally what's happening in the capital realm. In that, the council over the past couple of months has been awarding contracts that we've bid and have come in within budget. We still have a couple more that are out to bid right now. We've received some additional bids. So over the coming, you know, two to four weeks or so, the city council's going to see some more bids coming up for bid award. And what we're seeing is that the bids are coming in within the budgets thus far. So things looking up, there's a lot of utility work coming up. We've got the opening bids for the mitigation for the L rig, which is dealing with taking some storm water up in the Isquah Highlands and increasing hydrology in the wetlands that surround them. And then we've got some other smaller projects that are coming forward as well. So, but everything seems to be coming within budget, so.
Okay. Do either of my colleagues have any questions or anything you want to highlight this evening? Ask Vicky.
So I noticed that there are two items on the updates this time, and I think they're both ongoing, but I noticed them, or they jumped out at me anyway. So one of them is the Cookney Work Group. It's called out. And because we've been having some recent conversations about salmon recovery at our last meeting and a presentation from Fish, friends of the Isquah Salmon Hattery, I just wanted to sort of highlight that. And that is ongoing work, but I think it's the first time that I saw that on the project update list. And then also the work on Laughing Jacobs Creek, which is a collaboration with the city of Samamish on a basin plan for Laughing Jacobs Creek, which is also, I believe, a salmon habitat and salmon recovery.
That's correct. That's looking at the entire watershed for Laughing Jacobs.
I just wanted to highlight those two because they're topical to our salmon recovery and what more can we do for salmon recovery and what is the city doing?
Thanks Vicky. Lindsay, anything? All right, thank you. Okay, well, I think with that.
I think this was the item.
Or did you, was there something around project we'd like to, for us to, if you're welcome to come to the microphone? Thank you.
Leo Graham, 22609 Southeast 43rd, 44th Lane. I'm from Providence Point and I'm Chair of the Government Affairs Committee and these are fellow committee members. We're here because of what you've heard for many, many years, and that is Providence Point's concern over the intersection. Want to make sure that as a part of the current considerations in terms of funding, Providence Point is, as you know, up there, we're kind of a little island that has been annexed essentially into the city this fall. And the 43rd Way and 223, which come up funnel into a two-lane road right at Providence Point, is going to be further impacted, it appears, within the next two years by a new high school. It's proposed, it's not absolute, but it's certainly coming online quickly. And the school district, which we're meeting with, expects to have it open by 2021. 2,400 students, high school, elementary school and all of the facilities that go with that. The traffic now during commute time and on the weekends and at various other times is substantial. It's a main arterial for Samamish. I know it's on the outskirts of Issaquah, but Issaquah residents are using the road to come back and forth for retail and professional services and the rest. Providence Point is a seniors community and I can tell you, it's running the gauntlet now to try to get out of Providence Point onto that road, particularly where it bottlenecks. And there's two, there's the point where we come in and out that is the most obvious at the bend, where the two lanes going up meet into one. But also, there's an exit at the other end, which of the main Providence Point section, that is less obvious, that people use to get up 223. All of the housing in that area is being impacted. And more housing is coming online. The city's approved a new project at the Circle, the Roundabout, and there's a project being built out now on 43rd. It's big accidents waiting to happen. We need to do something with this. It's been going on a long time. The residents are becoming more and more concerned. So we're going to continue to meet with city staff and with city council and keep our issue in front of you and hope that the funding is found somewhere sometime. The work's been done, the plans are all but done. They've been drilling holes to find out what the geotechnical issues are. So it seems like we're at that tipping point where maybe we can get something done and deal with this issue before we have high school students driving their cars up and down 43rd. Nobody goes 40 miles an hour anymore. Porsches and Teslas race to see who's going to get to the bottleneck first at this point. And we need to do something to slow everybody down, make it safe for everybody in the area. With that, any questions?
All right, thank you Leo.
Okay.
Appreciate that very much. Okay, if there are any other comments? Not seeing any. All right, everybody, thanks for coming here this evening. Vicky, thanks for filling in. Lindsay, thank you. Sheldon, we are adjourned.